All right, I will call to order tonight's meeting of the Lennox School Committee. Everyone should be aware, this is being live broadcast on CTSB. And I guess, not on the agenda, but first order of business is to welcome newly appointed and once-in-future returning committee member Bob Munch. We are delighted to have you back. Thank you for --
(applause)
The greatest admiration goes to those who know what they are signing up for and yet still throw their hat in once more. So, really appreciate you having me back. Second item, opening of the school year. We are back, looking forward to seeing more of all of you, which will be wonderful. I had a couple of things I wanted to mention. One, just briefly, as was reported in the Eagle at our workshop over the summer, we had a conversation that became much more heated than it should have, and I think, you know, a sign I take very seriously, and we actually spent a lot of time last year developing our core values, and one of them was, we hold ourselves and each other accountable for respecting all individuals, their ideas, our rules, and shared spaces in our community. So, I just wanted to assure the committee and the broader community that I am doing my part to hold members of the committee accountable, and also to hold myself accountable for facilitating meetings as effectively as I can, and also welcome feedback on that. So if others, committee or community, feel that we are not upholding our bargain there, please do let us know, because that is important, that we walk the walk on that, I think. Secondly, turning the page to the new year, I wanted to just take a minute to acknowledge our incredible staff. In particular, I had the privilege of speaking at Convocation this year for the first time, and I've been honest, I've never seen our entire staff in one place. You know, as a parent, you just have your kid's teacher, or maybe you're at the assembly and like, you recognize some teachers mixed in with the parents, but to be there under the Tent, the Mount, was very generous to host us there, it was a wonderful spot, and see the entire staff in one place, and this critical mass of people who are dedicating their lives to teaching our kids was, it was overwhelming, and underscored to me how fortunate we really are to have the staff that we do. And then I also want to say a word in particular about our administrators, who, I guess in one respect justifiably are spoken of less often than the teachers, but at the same time are, do incredibly important work, and in particular, want to convey the gratitude of the entire committee, I think, for the quality of work that you guys are doing, and even just thinking back to a year ago, we were, this is the first time, this is a second year of the same administrative team, which is fantastic, with some very welcome new additions. But, you know, a year ago was, will we find some stability? Can we sort of get moving forward? And now, a year later, it's incredible to see how much is happening, and not just reactively dealing with stuff, but actually being in a position to plan forward. And I think, you know, it's hard to convey how fortunate we are to have Dr. Collins. That, I was, I'm very good with words in many other contexts, but not this one, and the best I could come up with was like, when you have a really great teacher for your kid who's making a difference, and you like, want to tell all the other parents how amazing the teacher is, and that's what Dr. Collins is for the district, I think, and so we're truly lucky to have you here.
Thank you.
And, you know, you've done incredible work focusing, all of us, on building a culture of belonging, and then with, really, every member of the administrative staff on looking ahead and planning with Melissa for a sustainable budget despite a large number of one-time in-and-outs that have been coming through, with Jeremiah on the plan for the building, which I think is such a great solution, and looking beyond just the standard, well, now we fixed the building, with Brenda, both planning for the continuity at Morris, and having Holly join us, and then having this opportunity to bring on the focus on curriculum, instruction assessment, and with Brian on starting the multi-year process of improving our model for early and targeted intervention. So, we'll be talking a lot about all, you know, all of that as the year progresses, I guess that's what we're here for, but I have very high hopes, and I think we're off to a terrific start. I'd warned the rest of the committee, I would ramble for a few minutes at the beginning, but also wanted to give anyone else a chance, if there's anything else to hit on here before also letting you guys say hello to the new year.
I'll say, as a former insider who was outside last year, it was very exciting to see the progress you all made. It was really quite heartening, to your point with Dr. Collins, you seem to be getting some great traction, you've got some extremely positive communications going out there, you keep everybody well informed, your newsletter, your meeting minutes that came out to the committee, when I opened it up this week, I was really impressed with what you had in there, so great job, and Brenda, you always do a great job. I think, you know, we're knocking it out of the park right now, and it's really gratifying to see. I'm happy to be back to take a little piece of work with it, so.
I have a couple of things, if I may, one, Orin, I actually discussed that, I feel like one of the things at the summer meeting, when we did our reorganization, we also did our evaluation, that got bumped up a little bit because of the change in makeup of the committee, or whatever we did, and I really think one of the things I didn't emphasize as much is that all of the committee commented on how present you have been, that kind of ended up in the wrong score by accident, but really in the sense that not that that matters as much, it's really making sure that you know how much we appreciate that you're showing up at events and being very present, not just at the school events, but also engaging with the larger community, whether it's our local business partners, heads of other departments, really having that inter-departmental, community-based communication. I personally have gotten a lot of feedback about how great it's been to meet you and get to know you, and I do think that we didn't quite get to emphasizing how important that was, and it's a lot. I mean, you also have a family in your own time, and you're really present for us, and I think people definitely noticed it and have commented, and I wanted to make sure that you know that we saw that, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And then I also had the privilege of attending Convocation, which is always my favorite, it was really fun this year doing it at our business partner, The Mount, such a wonderful place that I really enjoy for its beauty, and also its promotion of education with adults and other people in the community, and, you know, being, going there for lectures, and then having them support our education at our school level and with our teachers, I think is what's, really, I hope for more of that across the many people within our committee, community that contribute to what a great community this is, and that we have such a wealth of information and knowledge right outside our door. And then one of the things that the students did, and I meant to reach out and ask what the students' prompt was, but I think there was enough, you know, we've at times had keynote speakers and all these other people, and I think it's meant to inspire and meant to inform, and this time instead, it was a really array of wonderful students who were there to inspire and inform, and it was really great, and some of them talked about what they love about Lennox, and then some talked about what they're looking forward to, and I think I kind of mentioned what I love about Lennox, and what I'm looking forward to, and this goes to your point, Orin, about the community that we're trying to create, I really appreciate each and every one of you as school committee members, and all the work that you have done and continue to do, and I'm recommitting myself to really engaging in sometimes hard conversations in a way that we all have a chance to be heard and to feel valued, and even when we do disagree, which I think is actually suggests that we're modeling for our students the ability to have disagreements, but in a way that feels civil and feels honoring, and sometimes it's a, we really want that to be face-to-face conversations, where we can engage with each other when we're frustrated, in a way that feels like we are modeling the brave and safe space that is the motto of Lennox, and so I'm recommitting myself to that, you know, I think we all have work to do, and I'm looking forward to the coming year. So, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Orin, I'd just like to support your words, I think they speak very clearly towards the general sentiment, certainly, I assume, the entire committee, and, you know, I'm really looking forward to this year, with the school and faculty, the district.
All right, thank you. So, I've invited Jeremiah and Brenda to speak to the opening at each school, and I've asked if Jeremiah could go first, because he has to get to the open house at LMHS.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. Thanks for being so accommodating with the agenda as well, if I start speaking quickly, show the interviewers what I got going. Things off to a great start in our building as well. We've got 446 people. We have several new staff members, I've mentioned in the newsletters and whatnot, I think it's been fun here, Nicky McMan, Spencer Craker, Jean Robitaille, Jaclyn Klein, and Marcus Haas. Mr. Haas is our new assistant principal, some of you have met him already, he came on board midway through the summer, he's off to a great start, and I'm very, very optimistic about his time here with us at the district. I want to just thank a bunch of people for things they did to get us going so smoothly. Nicole Brooks, who's a relatively new registrar, did a lot of great work over the summer in putting our schedule together. A lot of people don't understand how difficult that is, and it's the kind of project where you, it never really ends, because you think you're done, and then you realize you've got to change something, and when you make a change here, there are five other things that have to change, and each of those have ripple effects as well. She's really taken to it well, and has done some incredible work over the summer. The biggest payoff with all the work she's done with Power School is that we're scheduling the way we promised we would. It's not been without some bumps in the road, but for example, we now have band meeting all together at one time, so instead of three people meeting here, five people meeting here, six people meeting here every other Tuesday, we have, I believe it's 28, 28-member band in grades eight through 12, meeting every day, which has its own set of challenges, but we're really thrilled to see things moving in that direction. Today was kind of a big day for us, in the morning, we had a wellness fair and a student activity fair, running simultaneously for students in grades six and nine, going into middle school and into high school, working with some of our community partners, including Canyon Ranch, Miraval, Lennox Fit was there, many others, and there was also this concurrent student activity fair, which will be up and running tonight for Back to School Night, where kids can get a chance to talk to older students who are participating in some clubs and activities, learn what it's about, and actually sign up. If there are any parents watching who are considering going to Back to School Night, it's not too late. Amy Higgins was really the driving force behind that wellness fair, and Aaron Malloy did a lot of the heavy lifting on the club fair. Bussing went fairly smoothly, that's always a nail-biter. Ms. Velkowsky got the schedules up, plenty of time on the website, it seems to be working fairly well, no hiccups there. Our decision to run two Monday schedules, and just a reminder, a Monday schedule for us means that every single class meets, all eight, for an abbreviated time, and so we ran a Monday schedule on Thursday and Friday, just so the kids were able to see all their teachers, and because we lost a Monday due to Labor Day. So, that decision worked out well. Our custodians did a fantastic job, we had a lot of visitors in the building this summer. We liked that we were able to open our doors to so many community activities and partners, but there were a lot this summer, they stayed on top of it while they did all the work they have to do on the building, and they were additionally tasked this summer with installing a bunch of air conditioners in the second story. So, as of today, every single classroom in the middle school and high school in the second story has air conditioning. It's not a permanent solution, the fire chief is on board with it, the building inspector says okay, but it's really just to take the edge off while we make longer-term plans for central air and that upstairs. But it was a lot of work, and the custodians were extremely helpful with that. Our athletics are doing very, very well, our sports teams are off to a great start, we've got several new coaches that are doing great work. One program that we're especially proud of, you might have seen the, you might have noticed the picture leading the newsletter just this past weekend, is our unified basketball team, which is students of varying abilities, varying strengths, coming together to learn about basketball, practice basketball, and ideally, we'll be playing some games against other similarly formed teams in the region, but it's just a wonderful, wonderful thing to see all of our students from different backgrounds and abilities come together. And we have Maggie Rivers to thank for that program, she did a lot of work getting that Teaching is off to a great start. I was really thrilled to see, in the middle of the week, Wednesday of last week, because I sort of walked through the halls, I could see that teaching was really happening in earnest. You know, they weren't filling out index cards with their favorite pizza topping, or something like that, or kids were engaged, and we were already well into it, and I think that just speaks to a lot of planning and professionalism, teachers were ready to go. Part of our convocation was the LMMHS Olympics, there were three events, it was a golf challenge, there was the, there was the marshmallow engineering challenge, they were working in teams of about eight people on a team, and then there was the poetry challenge, and the poetry challenge was an interesting exploration of AI. So I used artificial intelligence to develop a rubric that they were going to use to grade the poetry that the teachers wrote, so the teachers had to include these five words that Ms. Getson chose for us. They had to write a poem on poster board, and then we quickly typed those in while they were out golfing, and then the same AI bot that wrote the rubric gave feed, scored them, we had a winner, and generated feedback on the poetry, and it was amazing to see, not only did it grade their efforts for them, but it came up with the rubric and the task itself, so it was just an interesting, we're going to be talking a lot about AI in our building this year, and this is sort of a fun way to get it started. I would love to take your questions, but I really don't think I can.
We'll save them up.
Yeah, but please email me, contact me directly if I can provide any further info.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks. Actually, next up, Brenda, and then Holly, I'll introduce you a little later in.
She too has two children at LMHS.
All right, we'll, we'll get her. Certainly.
Welcome. Morris had a great beginning to the school year, we too had several hires, we welcomed two new kindergarten paras, Kayla Allen and Stephanie Sayers. We also welcomed Lauren Davidson, a new pre-K teacher, along with Sarah Lehold, Melanie Council, and Nicole Derby. Sarah teaches first grade, Melanie teaches second grade, and Nicole teaches fourth grade. We also added to our special education staff with Ben Tobin, and Katie Lefkowitz is a new speech and language teacher, so we're really happy to have them, and probably most importantly, and the one I'm super excited about, is having Holly there with me. I know I'm taking on a new role, but being the principal is a really lonely job, and I'm loving being able to share laughs and stressful situations with someone. So, and Holly hit the ground running at the convocation, there was a PowerPoint of staff, and one thing they like to do during their time off, and Holly, that was Holly's idea, and she brought that together to the admin team, so we're super happy to have her, I'm really happy to have her, so, thank you. Many of you have walked down to see it, but we have a brand-new playground, and we're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony tomorrow night for the students, and then right after that is our first PTO meeting of the year, where we'll be discussing the Apple Squeeze, which is also the best fundraiser, so, any parents out there listening, please come to Morris tomorrow at 6:00 PM. The students and staff, we've been reviewing our school-wide expectations, so we're consistent, and we're all on the same page at Morris, so we're all learning to rise to the challenge, own our own actions, always work together and respect ourselves and others. We will be having an assembly on Thursday to kick that off officially, and this year new, we are having our bus drivers come in to be present, so we're all speaking the same language, and the students will see that we are a team, so that will be Thursday morning at 9:15. We are working on our reading and math benchmarks right now, just to get a little baseline to see where our students are, and our teachers will have an understanding of where to start off with their instruction. And lastly, we've reviewed our safety protocols, we had a fire drill last week, and we are out of that building in three minutes flat. And like Jeremiah, I just need to thank our custodial staff, they did a phenomenal job getting that building ready, and at the last minute, I had a staff member resign, which caused a little bit of a hardship on the office staff, and Amy Freeman, my admin assistant, Laura Zink, and Bridget Roy, I mean, they rolled up their sleeves and they got things done that needed to be done. So, there's just, there's me up here, but there's a whole team behind me, and I'm grateful for each and every one of them.
Thank you. Yeah.
She wants to make a comment for Holly now, we should do that now, so she can go.
Chairs, do me permission to?
Yeah.
Have you got to do so?
It's part of opening the school year.
Absolutely.
First, I just want to say thank you so much for introducing me tonight, I cannot even express how excited I am to be in the Lennox Public School system. I've had two daughters go through Morris, and as a parent, from a parent point of view, I've seen just how excellent the school is, both the community, positive community, and the academics, so I am thrilled, and now to see it from the inside really proves what I was thinking all along as a parent. Like Ms. Kelly said, we have really hit the ground running together, I feel like we're really working as a good team, and we're kind of falling into our own now, and figuring out, you know, what our roles are at this point, but again, working together. And I want to say thank you for trusting me to take on this role, Dr. Collins and Mrs. Kelly, and the interview staff. I'm just very excited to be here, and we've hit the ground running, and the students, the staff, everyone at Morris, I can feel the positivity coming from everyone in the building every day, so it's just a wonderful place to work, and I could not express how happy I am, so thank you.
Thank you. We are equally happy that you are here.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
You guys can reach out for anything at any time, you know, open line of communication is always so important, so my door is always open, the phone is always there, give me a call at any time, so thank you.
And just as a comment, I don't know that I've ever seen an assistant principal come up to speed and contribute so much in such a short amount of time, you would think that Holly and Brenda had been working together for years, I mean, really, super.
Thank you.
We're lucky to have you. So.
We will not be offended at all.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Please do, you're a parent as well, and you've got to do all the things.
Thank you. Have a great night. You as well.
I am, I'm honored by your words. It's mutual, I feel very fortunate to have landed here, and the analogy I would make is like a conductor, I don't actually play the instruments, it is the admin team who are doing that, and what I do is, instead of a group of individuals playing their own song, my job is to bring everyone together and make beautiful music, right? And that is exactly where we're at, we're in a really good place, it's a great culture, everyone sort of plays a different instrument, right, in our band analogy, but man, when they come together, it's powerful stuff, and the convocation, which was fantastic, came out of, a lot of the ideas were the brainchild of Brenda, but they came out of this synergy that is our admin team meetings, you should see the ideas bouncing off of each other, and then what if we did this, and, oh, woke the staff like this, and what if this happened? And in the end, it becomes this great thing, and we are off to a positive start, beautiful school year. I couldn't be more thrilled, and to echo you, Mr. Rimmler, I'm looking forward to what the year has to bring, I think it's going to be really good, staff's in a good place.
Thank you. I don't know how I feel about the conductor thing, I'm the one who's sitting at Tanglewood going, he's not doing anything, I could do that, but I understand it's very difficult, from what the experts tell me. Public comment? I don't see any public to comment, we don't have any correspondence, and so we're on to the board report, in which we will attempt to very quickly approve three sets of minutes, unless there are any comments on any of them.
So, would you like them all together, or do we need to do them one by one?
I think we'll do them one by one for now, I'm going to learn how to make what's called a consent thing, and then we can approve all of the perfunctory stuff at once.
Yeah, I think that's pretty good.
Coming soon.
So I move to approve the minutes of August 21st, 2024.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Approved.
I move to approve the minutes of July 22nd, 2024.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Approved.
And I move to approve the minutes of June 24th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Be sure you got all of the seconds in the numbers. Broad-based participation.
I have Mike, and I have Kim, and then Ronnie gets the last one.
I mean, Mike and I did at the same time, however, I'm not.
We're going to give that one to company. All in favor? Aye. Approved. All right, you got your little break? Okay, we're back.
All right, I do want to, I do want to speak to the events of today, the FBI has some sort of algorithm where they check social media, and a student in our school this morning posted something, the algorithm picked it up, the FBI notified the Lennox Police Department, and within minutes, the student was in an office, being questioned. My understanding is that the student is going to be charged criminally, we'll wait until the end of the investigation before the school consequences are finalized. I want to be clear to everybody that at no point was anyone in any actual danger, I think the student thought that it was a joke, not realizing that it would turn into this, but it is no joke, and in the aftermath of the recent tragedy in Georgia, nobody finds any of this funny, and the reactions are swift, and the consequences are harsh. I did put something out to parents in the community with my phone number, and if there are questions that I can answer, a few parents have reached out to me already, I will answer what I can.
How does work get down to the students?
So, the, and I should double, I should double-check, I know that the assistant principal put something out, I'm not sure if it went out just to the staff, or it went out to the students as well, if it didn't, we communicate that to the students, certainly, they need to be assured as well, absolutely. Are there other questions about this before I? So, on more positive note, I did want to speak and give kudos to Brenda on her CIA Director role, she's already digging in and working with the sixth grade, they're doing, they're digging in on benchmarking, I appreciate the committee's support of this move, I think it's going to be a really big lever, and we're, I mean, we're already starting to lay the foundation for what this is going to be and the potential of it, and again, we couldn't have picked a better person to be doing that, kudos. The other piece I want to say thank you for is the support of the facility's coordinator, Tom Hines, from the moment he officially started, he has been, he's been worth his weight in gold, he's been involved in all sorts of discussions, and we're looking to prioritize between the two schools and not have two sets of priorities come up, but have one as a system. And one of my goals last year was the sort of systemic thinking, and this is right along those lines, and he is, again, he's the, he was the perfect pick for this, and he's doing, he's doing a great job. And on to that point, National Grid has an incentive for LED lighting, and we're working with Tom and an organization called World Energy, and the savings are truly, I don't say this lightly, but phenomenal, the difference between what our current lighting costs, what it'll cost to change all of the lights in the two schools, and then the immediate savings, and the savings in perpetuity are fantastic, and I just got the numbers before the meeting today, but I will, but I will share them out, and you can see the stats. Melissa and I were involved with Tom in a meeting today about that, and we expect to have, we had some questions, Tom had some great questions, and we expect to have more answers tomorrow, once I get that, I can share that out with you. The principals, the principals stole a little of the thunder. The principals stole a little of the thunder. The things I wanted to give shout-outs to, one was the unified basketball with Bailey Patella. Here is an opportunity for students that may not, maybe wouldn't make the team or not inclined to be on the JV or VASU team, to be able to have an opportunity to participate and play and be part of a team. I've seen it in other schools and I think that very, very, very engaging. Dr. Ames spoke about the Wellness Club and the Activities Fair. What he didn't mention is that for our little school, excluding sports, we are putting forth over 40 clubs and activities. So imagine if you've got an interest, like we've got your number, we've got something for an interest of everybody. And that really goes to, again, our staff and their willingness to commit to that and to have clubs and organizations for students and meet their interests. And when we get to the point where we're speaking about my goals, one of the things is student engagement and this is a real hook when you have a club or activity and an adult that's running it that's invested in you. The new playground, I hope everyone turns up for the ribbon-cutting ceremony tomorrow. That's great. We started last year with the e-forms and digitizing our archived paper, another way to make us more efficient. And we're right on the cusp of being able to roll that out and it's very exciting. It means that when a call comes into HR, that somebody won't have to go into the basement and look through a box for an old record. It means that we're going to have it, it's going to be searchable in documents. It means that our forms going forward are going to be able to be online and with whatever sort of approval notification. So if it goes to the principal first, the person that submitted would know that the principal's approved it, they'd know where it's sitting. It really is moving into the 21st century. I think it's going to make us far more efficient. And I think that's what I have at the moment. Thank you. Good stuff. All right, the next meal charge. So, students do not pay in Massachusetts for meals. However, adults cannot get that reimbursement. So they have to pay the full price. And speaking of the reimbursement, what the federal and state government require for reimbursement is that we charge a minimum amount. We didn't do this last year. So we were at $3.50. We didn't do this last year. So we need to do it now because we're audited. They would find fault with that. So it was five, they have the calculation, the formula, it was like $5.36 or something and the food service director said, can we not deal with pennies? So we just rounded it up to $5.40. So $5.40 is the minimum and that is the increase. It needs a vote. It needs a vote by school committee, but it's regarding adult meals and the reimbursement that we get, we have to charge a certain amount to have the meals be reimbursed, even though they are free to students. Are there any questions?
I'm a little confused. You're saying that the students are free.
Students are free.
But adults.
Adults have to pay, but there is still a reimbursement because the state has said, look, we're going to make them free, but we're not going to put the charge on to the schools, so we have to reimburse. So we have to have a minimum number that the meals are worth for the state to do their reimbursement to us.
And those are just the adult meals?
But the only ones that's actually putting any cash across the table are adults.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, no, you're welcome. It's a little confusing.
It seemed harder than I thought it was going to be.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the meal charge increase to $5.40 as presented.
Second half.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
All right, the next item requiring a vote is, the U.S. Tennis Association has given our tennis team $274 as a grant. They will be purchasing a rain sweep to clean the courts, a tennis ball hopper and some Wilson Pro grips with those funds. But since it is a donation, even in the form of a grant, it requires your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the USTA donation.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
Okay, the next requiring a vote is the approval of the piano donation. The Coleman and Fleet families donated their beautiful 1927 Noby Baby Grand Piano. It's been in their family for 97 years and if they weren't moving, it would still be in their family. They lovingly took care of it, has new strings, new hammers, new pin locks, et cetera. The theater manager and the music director are absolutely thrilled. I went to see it because everyone was raving about it. It is just a beautiful instrument and we're very fortunate to have that donation. It's in the pit.
It's in the pit.
It's in the pit. That's what the front of the theater is called, the orchestra pit, even though we don't have a true pit, still called the pit.
I'm happy to move to approve that we accept a donation of a piano with our gratitude.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. And yes, thank you.
Mr. Trump, can we just ask the secretary to make sure to send out some nice thank you cards for these delightful donations?
Yeah. All right. Next are my goals. You will recall that last year on there was the safety assessment being the new superintendent to get a sense of where we were with our buildings, our protocols, our procedures, our relationships with the emergency responders and all of those things. And now we've got that place. So that doesn't go away. We continue our work. I was invited by the Mass Chief of Police Association to get onto their School Safety and Security Committee and their Behavioral Threat Assessment and Management Violent Risk Assessment Committees. And so I sit in on those. They bring in, in a very timely fashion, experts from around the Commonwealth and around the country to speak about how we keep schools safe and how we respond. They're continually sending out articles from professional magazines and such about this. Most of the people on there are the chiefs of police, but it's very interesting and if something happens in their community, they share that out in confidentiality, but everyone gains information about how to respond, what went well, what didn't, et cetera. So the safety assessment, particularly in the light of what happened today, stays one of the primary tasks that we do. But what I've done with the goals for this year is really simplified it right down to what the research says moves the needle on achievement. And so, talking about the instructional core, which of course is the students, the teachers and the content. And the goal is that the teachers change the relationship between the student and the content and the curriculum and how they access it and what they see. So I boiled it down to three things. Continuing with the culture, right? The brave and safe space, because you can't thrive if you don't belong, right? And so this is staff and students and to really have us be an employer that more than just words, more than just wristbands and posters on the wall, that we are truly dedicated to the physical and emotional safety and well-being of those that work, teach and learn here. And the overall school community as much as we can within our sphere of influence. The next piece is, and it really boils down again to the research, is moving the needle on assessment, on achievement, is the instruction and curriculum. So the effective instruction. And this is the piece where having a Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment becomes key, right? Is the teacher's knowledge and skills. And it isn't just their knowledge and skills, it's how they create collective efficacy, how we work together, which again, the research suggests is the biggest lever. Because once we get everyone with their skills and knowledge, right? Understanding and pulling in the same direction, that's the thing that makes more difference than anything else. Initially, like clear written objectives, so everybody knows, we should be able to walk in any room and have a, say to the student, what are you, right? What are you doing? How does it relate to what you're doing yesterday and what you're going to be doing tomorrow? Like what is this task? What's this look like? Everyone should understand, students included, where they're coming from, where they're going and how it relates. And then the formative assessments and adjustments to instruction along the way. So, two types of assessment, the formative and summative, summative being at the end. If you go through a course or a unit or whatever and you get to the end and there is the summative and you're like, oh, boy, you know, I as a student didn't do particularly well. But if it's formative and in the moment, you can get a course correction when you need it, when you're struggling with what you're struggling with and make that course correction right there, get that kind of information back to you in a timely manner, it makes all the difference. So moving in those directions. And then next is having the coherent and viable curriculum. Really, it's about rigor and relevance. Focused observations and evaluations. So again, when we're all on the same page and an evaluator is going into the room, that it's focused. The teacher knows what they're going to be, what the focus is on. It's tied to what the curriculum is. It's tied to where we've identified shortcomings with students and what they need to know. Once we start connecting these dots, again, that's applying leverage and really starting to make a difference. And we're really fortunate, right? I mean, we are a high-performing school district, but it doesn't mean that there isn't room and there aren't things that we can do. You know, ideally, I would love in a few years' time to be talking about how we are at the very top tier in Massachusetts. And there is no reason that we can't be with our staff. And then authentic literacy. And all the research points to this. And you've seen this in multiple iterations of the principal goals, the SIPs at Morris is about literacy and that continues. And when we can start to make it the primary mode of learning content and having students be reading authentic texts and have the relevance there, again, we move the needle. And then finally, student engagement. We've done a really good job of utilizing our business partners and our community resources and we're building upon that. We've added extra seats at our building partner meetings and there's a wealth of knowledge and opportunities there for students to do. Internships for us to be able to bring them in and have even more of a partnership. We're going to work toward that. At the end of the day, it is about finding relevance for all the students. Because if what you're doing, you don't see relevance, you're not going to be as engaged as if you can see how this applies to your life and where you want to go. And really, we do an incredible job with the students who their initial vision is to be college-bound and those that may have other aspirations. We want to build upon that. We want to have more opportunities for them and have them see relevance in our curriculum and what we're doing as well. So, the team, for everyone at home, the admin team, we're all working off a book by Mike Smoker. Look at that. We're all working off a book by Mike Smoker, "Leading with Focus." He wrote a book about focus and then this is how to take that and lead with it. And so we are, we're working off that. And so if you get a copy, you can be right there with us. If there are any questions about the goals and where we are to where we want to be, I'm happy to respond.
Can you talk a little bit about where we are, where we want to be and how you envision getting there? I feel like this is the iceberg. We're seeing 10% over the surface, but that other 90% under the surface is really what's going on.
Sure. So, what we do, right? The school committee has their sort of vision and then the admin team turns that into concrete action items to move forward, right? So as we look at this, a lot of these things have concrete action items to them, right? Putting in a Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Having extending the work that's been done pre-K through 5, now with 6, next year with 7, the year after with 8. And then all of high school, moving these things forward. Our work, the presentation that our Director of Student Services, Brian Kelly, gave us with the MTSS, the Multiple Tiered Student Support System. And not just the students who are struggling, but enrichment as well. And there'll be another, that presentation 2.0 for you coming up to show you what we've already accomplished, which we've accomplished more than we thought we would on the timeline, the four-year timeline that we presented and what's that going to mean moving forward. But if you have specific questions about, I want to be as transparent as possible.
I'll throw in a related one because I had a similar question, was I think, it's so exciting that we are talking more about the curriculum and learning this year as opposed to a budget issue or an administrative issue, whatever. I think conversely, anyone who's not an education professional is like, oh, I know all the steps of a budget process, as opposed to, for some of the things that you're describing. So I think, you know, particularly when you're talking about the sort of engagement, the sort of different stages of engaging students, what is it that we should be looking for that's actually going to be happening to drive that forward? So there are a couple of PD days a year, but that's, only so much happens then. Is it visits to classrooms? What will be happening differently to make us?
I'm glad that you actually, that you brought up the PD because we've, so we've taken the two individual PDAs, put them together at the beginning of the Thanksgiving, the most traveled holiday in the calendar, but still early enough for what is learned, what goes into the teacher's toolkit to be applied for the rest of the year. We've been working, the admin team being we, we've been working on outlining what this is going to look like. And then per contract, we bring the LEA in and we kind of flesh it out to be exactly what we're going to be presenting. But to your point, there's a continuity of, we have these observations and evaluations and done in isolation, they don't mean a lot. When you can zoom out and see the trends and say, hmm, you know, this higher-order thinking skills seem to be, right? Seem to be a common theme as we do our evaluations that we're not seeing in classrooms, I'm just picking something. Then what we do is we tie that into our PD, so then that is the focus of our professional development. We look for multiple themes. Once we've addressed those themes, the next. Once we've addressed those themes, the next highest priority rise up. Also, when we're sending folks out for PD, because the only, not the only PD is what we offer. There's a lot of PD we send folks out for. When we're sending them out for PD, and we've, we've identified what the needs are, we've set these goals. And then when a PD request comes up, we can say, oh, this is going to lower down on the priority. Is this moving us closer to this goal, that this collective efficacy of, of what we're focusing on and where we want to be, is it moving us closer to that, right? We start to prioritize our money and our energy on, on those things. But there's a, there's a connecting the dots. When we talk about being systemic, a lot of great things have been happening, and they happen in pockets and isolation. And what we're doing now is we're making it a, we're making it a system. So there's a connectedness. And to be clear, and I don't want to put sort of any undue pressure on our director of curriculum instruction and assessment. This is, this is a multi-year process. This doesn't happen in a month, or two months, or three months. This is, this is slow to build. And, and by building it slowly and steadily, it becomes entrenched in the way that we do business, and it lasts. So the idea is not to have the flavor of the month PD, but to say, for teachers to be able to count on, I know that this is going to be the theme. And we're still identifying these, right? We haven't been doing the system wide. We haven't been doing the, what are the trends in our observations? What are we seeing when we have these evaluations to be able to look at that data? And give Brenda time to work, to help analyze that data as well. So, if that answers your question. But again, connecting the dots and, and moving from isolation to having all of this be interconnected and, and make sense. And again, I don't want anyone to conceive that the teachers don't do a great job. They do. And when we can, when we can get all of them the same way, I made that conductor analogy, not playing individual music, but, but the symphony together, the students benefit.
Couple of questions. So currently, the assessments of the teachers, the evaluations of the teachers, the observations of the teachers, is done by whom?
So assistant at the, at the high school assistant, assistant, assistant principal and principal. And for the special education staff, done by director of student services.
So the assistant principal is assessing classroom teachers?
Assistant principal assesses.
Okay. And, and the principal is said?
Yep. And at Morris, we just now have an assistant principal. So before, it would have been special education staff by Mr. Kelly and everyone else by Mrs. Kelly.
Right. And the other question I have, speaking to culture and physical emotional safety. I mean, God forbid, we are, we're in a situation where we actually were presented with a school violence situation. Other than the obvious, our school adjustment counselors, our nurses, our admin team, what, what organizations do we have put in place at this time to come in and help with the emotional support in the counseling piece, other than our, our on-staff people? Do we work collaboratively with, and who would that be?
We, we do. We have, we have, we have several, we have several partners that we work with on professional development for teachers, building those, building those toolkits of how to have a responsive classroom that way. We also have folks that come in and give direct instruction to students as well. We've been working with the, we've been working with the ADL. We've had Maravell come in. We've had, hi. Mrs. Kelly, we had somebody else come in at Morris as well, another group on.
Captain Boson's there?
No.
At Morris, we use a special curriculum. We use Second Step, which works on building skills for our students. But as for outreach, so like if there's a student who maybe need more than our school adjustment counselors, they have a wide range of resources where we actually help connect the families with an outreach service, whether it's a therapist or working with an outside community agency to help that student.
If we had a, if we had a greater scenario, so when, when I was in Pittsfield, we, we were part of a network. And I can check to see how, you know, if that's still kind of in existence. But there was a network, if there was any sort of traumatic scenario, when I was a staff, I get called, like as part of our unit to go to a nearby, nearby district.
It does.
We can share counselors.
I guess I was talking about more immediate.
Yeah. So that you can share countywide counselors. So like if we needed people, I may call Pittsfield and say.
So there have been, there have been some incidents at other, there have been some incidents at other schools. And what happens is, you know, goes out to all the superintendents. And we all reach out and say, do you need us to send some counselors over? To this point, and I've only been here just over a year, we haven't had to send anybody. But, but that would be, if we had a tragedy, we would, across the county, we would, we would have counselors from, you know, all of the schools coming, to the point that whatever we needed. But we've been working, trying proactively, all of, you know, I'm, I'm on these committees, these safety committees, and the research, the research suggests that it usually starts with a student that has some sort of grievance against the school, against a person, whatever. And if we can build, if we can build a culture where grievances can be alleviated, a culture where there's trusting adults, a culture where we can be alerted, people feel that, that they can safely alert us to these things, then we can hopefully short circuit them.
So I don't know if this speaks to your greater question about other specific tragedies that could happen. So like sometimes it's not just ones that we're thinking about, about threats to building, threats to students. But there, we, the typical thing would be we experience some other type of thing. Like we had, you know, God forbid you have a, a staff member on your, you know, on hand that passes away. It was somebody's teacher, or you have a student in the building, or one of the buildings, and he passes. Like, we do have ways of, of reaching out to these other neighboring districts to get support. Because of the, they're more, those are the things that are more likely occurrences. These other kind of ripple effect tragedies that you sort of then have to like go through a series of, we get like trained and sort of this crisis management of sort of sorts. Like when this is affecting like either small bubbles of people, right? Like either a whole classroom, or then the periphery. And then how you, like, how do you work with those students and the staff around those things that really affect the community, or a small part, part of the community within a larger district?
Should we have those protocols in place? That was my question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't.
No, that was my question. I just did, yeah. I just wanted to make sure, you know, and I, and because I'm ignorant, so I don't know. But I know that you, you know, you always hear, you know, staff and counselors will be on site too, whatever, whatever. It's like, okay, so you have a large population of students and six people. I just was curious, what our outreach was, and if we had some type of protocol in place.
It's sort of a mutual aid kind of thing. And they would, in the same way that we would if somebody else had a crisis.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other, other questions around the goals?
Two quick ones. One, just to the assessment point, are we modifying our assessment to reflect this set of priorities?
So when you say, do you mean the, our evaluation tool?
Yes, evaluation for teachers.
Yes. So we have, we were one of a handful, I think of five, maybe schools that piloted DESI's updated version of the educator evaluation tool. And as such, because we had piloted it, it then was adopted. And so, you know, we had already had that under our belt. So now every school that wasn't part of the pilot is learning this for the first time. We're, we've already had a year with this tool. So we're, we're using the tool. And the tool does, instead of making this belonging, this piece separate, it just embeds it throughout the rubrics for teachers. And then the idea is not to say to a teacher, you know, okay, here are all these rubrics, get ready, you don't know what's going to be evaluated, is to say, we're going to focus on. These are going to be the three things that we're looking for this year. And, right? They know, we know, it's what we prioritized. And it shouldn't, we shouldn't just be pulling it out of the air. It should be, again, based on the data that we're gathering. But we aren't quite, we haven't quite connected all those dots, but we're, we're moving in the right direction.
Then the other question was just to your point of this being a multi-year process. What are, what are the good interim points? But what should we ask you about in June to, to, to see how it's going?
So I think if we're, I think if we're, if we're talking about the instruction and curriculum piece, we will, I'll be able to, as, so Brenda, be able to report back out on the progress that we've made with the work that's going on with, with sixth grade. A very dedicated group of teachers, I think, who are, who are eager for this collaboration. We'll be able to speak to, to that. And, and then at the end of the year, be able to speak to how that's kind of parlay into the, into the next year. And of course, there's a little, there's a little bit of overlap. It dovetails so that some of the work that's done isn't just exclusive to sixth grade. And if there are ways that we can, I, I know several members have spoken, if, if there's a way that, to, to accelerate that and, and get to the point where Brenda's doing the high school sooner, certainly can explore that as well. And we're amenable to that if it's a place we're at.
Bill, will there be sort of measurable results for that?
So if we're talking about benchmarking, that's exactly what we're going to have, right? Benchmarking, we're going to have, we're, we're going to have the, the benchmarks, and then be able to mark the, the, the progress based on that. We've made a mark, and where are we now? And where are we now? And, and what are some of the processes that are in place so that we continue to, that we can, that we continue to do this and have meaningful discussions around students' work?
Evaluate our own efforts as.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. And, and I shouldn't say that individual observations aren't useful. They certainly are, and they're useful for the, for the person receiving them. But the true use to a school district is to be able to take a step back and see across the board, where are our collective strengths and our collective challenges? And to identify those, and to be able to identify those challenges. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything on enrollment or staffing?
Yes, two, sorry. Well, the, I had the list of, I have the list of everyone we hired, but both the principals gave their, gave who they hired at each one of their schools, so. But I can speak to enrollment. If, if we subtract the four foreign exchange students from where we were at the end of last year, we are at the exact same number at the beginning of this year. We are at 774 students, which is exactly where we ended if you subtract the four foreign exchange students last year. So net neutral.
K through 12?
Yeah, pre-K through 12.
Pre-K through 12?
Yeah.
And then in first meeting in October, we'll have the official numbers, and you can look at the choice numbers?
Correct.
And so forth. Do we have any exchange students this year that you're aware of?
All right. Does that cover it?
That does cover it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for the time.
All right, we have two more items, both related to just what we'll be doing. The first is subcommittee focus, and that comes out of our discussion over the summer of how we wanted to organize the subcommittees. Attached to the agenda was the proposed list and descriptions. A few changes from what we've done in the past. We'll certainly still have finance focused on the budget cycle. We'll have human resources dealing with any issues, but particularly with contract negotiation this year. School building has always existed, but will become much more central this time around. And then one that we're adding, still needs a better name, so we can change it at any time, but for the moment called LPS specialty, which is the idea of trying to identify an area where the community and the schools might be excited about, really just focusing differentially on building some sort of a program, whether it is in the arts, in the environment, in wellness, presumably tied to something that is unique to our area, that would benefit all students. But really be more than, more than the incredible amount we already do, but thinking about what we can invest in next.
Or what's the differentiator between that and community engagement?
Glad you asked. So those will be sort of our standing committees. There will also be two other sort of ongoing initiatives. One is community engagement, which is, I think, a much more tactical, ongoing desire to get more input from the community. And including from students, from parents, from teachers and staff, from the broader community, from people who have recently graduated, and what that has meant for people who are not choosing to send their kids here and understanding what it is that they didn't feel the district was meeting of their needs. For kids who, for people who have recently arrived and are sending their kids there, how we are doing in sort of onboarding and so forth. And so obviously, we can't do all of that at once. But I think Ronnie and Kim will decide where to start. And as long as there's more people we want to hear from and, and can learn from it, it will be a more focused effort to actually get that input. And then conversely, also looking out into the community, as, you know, Bill mentioned, on some of the pathways work as well, finding more opportunities where there are businesses, organizations, and so forth that, that want to partner with the schools and, and have something to offer. Does that answer the difference anyway?
No.
No?
The specialty, so LPS specialty is going to be.
Specialty would be so.
Feedback from different members of the community with a different idea, or?
So I think specialty would be if we can identify something that we really want to invest in making a unique program for Lennox. So if we said there's not.
Like come out of the community engagement, somebody might have some idea.
Yeah, it should draw on what we have, right? It probably wouldn't make a lot of sense to do like mining. But, you know, there could be, if, if we wanted to have a really best-in-class arts program that, again, wasn't just for the kids who want to be in the play, but that really, starting in elementary school and carrying through, partnering with the incredible resources we have in the community, sort of defines the standard on how to do great arts education in a, in a small school. Certainly something related to the natural environment in the area could be a good one. Something related to health and wellness and sort of full life, beginning early, engaging more with what it means to be healthy. That, or we could spend a couple of months on it and decide none of that makes any sense and, and disman the committee. But the question is, is there something there that, you know, as we go into the next budget and so forth, we start to say, we actually want to put some resources behind it?
Okay. That helps.
And so, so community engagement will be an ongoing initiative. And then governance and policy, we've always had. At this point, I think, based on our discussions, we don't really need a standing subcommittee as much as David and I need to sit down and get the final MASC policy revisions across the finish line, which we will bring to you all for approval. I think there's been very good discussion over the past year about the need for developing a handbook for the school committee that helps folks who are coming on board. a handbook for the school committee that helps folks who are coming on board. And so that will be in process. And then just on an ad hoc basis, when something comes up, hey, a policy needs revising, we will, we will bring you appropriate text for that. If there is a bigger policy issue where we say, no, this is a longer run thing, we can, we can create a committee accordingly. So that is the outline. Subcommittee structure is subject to school committee approval, so feedback or adjustments are welcome, or else a motion to proceed on this basis.
I'll make a motion to approve the subcommittee focus as it's presented in the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it is approved. Everyone start scheduling your meetings. And then the last item is the calendar of meetings for the year. This isn't any change to any of the dates or any of the sort of core cycle activities that we have every year, but it's an attempt to layer into that both some of the subcommittee items and then some of the priorities that Bill was describing, as well as finally the elements of our strategic plan. Because our strategic plan is up for renewal. From our discussion this summer, there was not a lot of appetite for starting from zero and doing a huge process, but we do want to review where we are on each of the elements and, and see what, if any, changes we want to make. So if you just sort of look down the schedule, you'll see the top line items are still listed next to each date, and then under that are other things that we will try to include on each agenda, either for just discussion or for a presentation where it's appropriate. So on the strategic plan side, checking in on, on operations and facilities in conjunction with the building discussion. Good opportunity to look at curriculum a little later in the fall, which is a strategic plan element. It is a superintendent goal, it is obviously a key thing that we're developing, so it'll be a chance to dig in there. Middle of January, focus on technology and a better understanding of how we're doing there. And then into the spring, HR, which is less the sort of contract-type issues, subcommittee deals with, and more the questions of how are we developing our pipeline, hiring, supporting PD and so forth of our teachers. And then at the end of the year, we'll save some time to sort of discuss what we've learned and what, if anything, we want to change or add. Where it says initiatives, that's subcommittee and initiative work, either just chance to go deeper, update to the committee, or with things like budget and HR, it will be the sorts of updates during the, the budget and negotiation cycles. And then lastly, there are just some other items in here for your information that we'll definitely need to be hitting on. So late October, climate survey update, which connects to Bill's first priority, both the second one that we did last year, and then plans for continued surveying this year. School budget primer, not primer apparently, but we'll just go through how the budget is actually structured and built before we dive into doing so for the year. November, CHPE curriculum framework is the new Massachusetts Health and Physical Education standards that, unlike all other curriculum, the school committee does have to review and approve. So we'll have a presentation on what those changes are. We can decide any other steps we want to take on that. December, MTSS, as Brian mentioned, I must confess, beyond knowing what MTSS stands for, I am in woeful need of, of that presentation as well. January, want to spend some more time on innovation pathways, which is the non-college, connects a lot to Bill's last point, and is something that is broadening quickly in the schools. And then by the time we get to the spring, I'm sure we'll think of new things we want to talk about. So, you know, as we get to each meeting, we will evaluate, is this actually the right time to do this? Do we need to move it? What else is needed? Obviously, other items that folks have are always welcome, but I think that that will, will give us a good framework for what we need to be covering. And then the last, well, let me pause there, if there are any questions on that or comments? All right. And then the last item, just an update, we had talked about potentially moving these meetings to the high school where we can more sit around the table instead of in a line. It looks like that will likely work. CTSB has been very helpful in saying they can figure that out, they already have a lot of the links into the auditorium anyway. So a few more boxes to check, but hopefully our meeting in two weeks will be at the high school, and I will be sure to let you know in large, bolded emails between now and then where, where we will be.
We're looking at the library, is that?
Yeah, in the library.
Same to the library?
Yeah.
Nice.
And that is all I have. My assumption is there's no other subcommittee activity at this point. Any other business?
I mean, I, I would just like to take the moment to, you know, say thank you and, you know, to Mr. LeVey, who's a dear teacher.
Yes.
That was with us a very, very long time. And I'd just like to acknowledge everything that he did for the town and the community. I know I've been to a lot of kids around, and a lot of people have gone to LMHS, and thank you again for everything that was done.
Yeah. He's one of the names I've heard most frequently, so thank you.
The beautiful tribute that was done while he was here, here, it feels like, it was very special.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that.
All right. Take a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Oh?
Did, do we have to approve the school committee member that does have to be?
The schedule doesn't need any approval.
Okay.
That's just, please. Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.